All right, the September 24th, 2012, the Southern Council is now in session. We'll have the invitation by Captain of retired Officer Chris.
God bless you, Mr. White. Father God, we thank you for your love and your kindness. We thank you for meeting us in this meeting. We ask that you take control of this common council meeting here this evening. Bless the President and every member of this council. Oh, God, bless everyone present under the sound of my voice. Touch us all while we wait. And Father, we ask for your direction in this council. Give them direction what to do and how to do it. And you said in all thy ways acknowledge you, and you shall direct our path. And Father, we just look to you right now. We welcome you here tonight, Lord. Come on in, you desk. Come in and direct everything that we say or do. And we'll give you the praise, Father. We give you the glory. And we thank you right now for all that you're doing for this city, Lord. We ask that you touch the mayor of the city. Oh, God, touch him and give him direction. Give him what to do and how to do it. You told us in your word to pray for those in authority. And, Father, we pray for the mayor, the council, and the chief of police. Oh, God, even the law enforcement officers. We ask that you direct their path in everything that they say or do. And we'll give you all the praise and all the glory. In the name of Jesus, we pray, let everyone to thank us.
Thank you, Captain.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which this stands for our nation under God, in the name of our beloved and sovereign Church of America.
Mr. White, read that one. Mr. Scott. Mr. Henry Davis. Mr. Furley. Mr. Shay.
Hi, I'm here.
Dr. Furley. Dr. Varnett. Vice President David. President. Councilman White.
President.
Mr. Furley here. Mr. Deere. Hi, Chris. May I have the report and the subcommittee on minutes? The common council of the City of South Bend, the subcommittee has inspected the minutes of the September 24th meeting of the council and found them to be correct. Therefore, we recommend the same be approved. Dr. Derek here, David Varnett.
Much as said, the subcommittee reports on minutes, second.
As much as second in favor of that. Aye, aye, aye. Thank you for your special visit. We have a motion to continue. Well, sixty-seven to eight, two minutes, yes? So move. Second. A motion, second, I will say goodbye. Uh, aye, aye, aye. We will proceed to report the city office. As everyone here knows, the last meeting of the month was delegated to the mayor. Do you want to give some update on things going on in the city?
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's my pleasure to share a little bit of related news from the fourth floor with the council every month. Quite a lot going on in the city. I'll try to be precise about our life version too. This week is municipal energy. We've got out that, you know, it's one of the areas where our city has really distinguished ourselves by the innovative and taxpayer-saving approach that our city's taking in energy. One thing in particular I want to draw your attention to is Wednesday, we're gonna do a re-riffing cutting to celebrate the opening of the small hydro turbine, which is installed near site park over by the pitch line. That's gonna be eleven a.m. on Wednesday. Council members would certainly encourage to join if you're ready. Also, there's a little bit of a switch when it comes to our mayor's night. Ordinarily, we stagger mayor's night in, mayor's night out. We're voting going on in the lobby. We are going to do the mayor's night in twice, back-to-back, twice in a row. So that will be tomorrow until five-thirty at Southway. Any kind of city going, then we'll go back to the mayor's night out. I'll be in six districts with Councilmember here. I want to take this opportunity to again thank Chairwoman, Chair White, who's been doing a tremendous amount of work with the chairmanship of the personnel finance committee. We'll see something through to that with the team. And every council member, who has been diligently working with that committee and working very hard due to budgeting process. Also, I want to recognize our city control of our new, very hard work in pursuing the heavy lifting that we've been setting those priorities for the city's future and how we can handle budget in the coming years. Some news on the search for police chief. This week, the city is going to post advertisements for the position of chief. Those will be posted to professional organizations. They'll be posted in newspapers, and they'll be up on our city website. So you'll start seeing that later on this week, we'll start getting applications right away. And the window for those applications to come in will go until nineteenth of October. Also, I want to draw your attention to a week from Thursday, October fourth. That's gonna be our opportunity to have a town hall forum. We'll call it a reschedule from a prior tentative date, but now we do have a schedule for the fourth of the week from six p.m. to seven-thirty during the South Bend. Very important to me that we have a diverse and broad representation in the community. People weigh in on what the community is reporting before the chief. So we're welcome, not only in private, but the house and everybody who's in there, but your help in getting the word out so that we can have those guidelines about the future of our police parts. Our vacant abandoned property task force is meeting, getting closer to releasing reports and recommendations on behalf of the neighborhood. This is very much looking forward to sharing that with the whole council, with, of course, the help and cooperation of Ted Scott, Councilman Scott, who's on the other end of the issue. Some news on technology. You've all noticed the conversion of email from Google, Loopwise, and Microsoft Outlook. The tech revolution, the first upgrade to email, which is the inception of email. I'm excited to change the system. I think, I hope you'll agree with me, that it was very much needed and, or maybe a little bit of a challenge in getting the conversion. To go through and do many conversions, the team's done a great job making that all official efficient. So we want to thank council members in particular, Dr. Varnett, Chairman of the Technology Committee for the partnership that we'll roll out. Also a reminder that the technology upgrade will continue as we work to incorporate the three-one-one phone line and prepare that for the public service and, of course, in the budget. Something we'll be budgeting. We're also budgeting for the state to help with that. Fortunately, going to highlight, the outreach dialogue happening between the city and the university of Indiana. There'll be dinner later this week commemorating one-hundred-and-seventy years of the university's presence here, as well as one-hundred-and-twenty-five years of football. It seems like a good opportunity to celebrate the partnership and neighborhood and economic development. And speaking of universities, Indiana University of South Bend had a tremendous announcement late last week. The biggest gift in history of campus, four million dollars, three million plus one million dollar challenge for the捐捐 foundation, which can help our community. So a lot going on, but I will not ramble because I know we have a lot to talk about to see when it comes to the budget.
Thank you. Any questions? Councilmember Davis.
Thank you. Mayor, just a couple of points I want to bring to you. Thank you. I'm looking at Mission Park, which is really not from my district at all, but still a recurring development. I know it spreads out enough. Communicate this to Mr. Scott Ford as well. There is a huge pile of dirt that's covering up the existence of a building being built. I think the building probably falls to be finished or if it's not finished. And I think what a horrible way of integrating a new building to the city of South Bend. I've spoken of pile of dirt being addressed. I think it may have to be the building itself. I mean, there was an architectural, more than a status for Mission Park. I'm not aware of the achievements of activity at this point. However, I guess to get people a helping sense of the tree back from growing, the berry back from having that or doing it, a big huge dirt pile in front of a building that's built, that it gave off of the, the movement to the city.
The opening of that building is gonna be great news. And you're right, it would be great if there were a clear line of sight from Sample Street over to that site. My understanding is that that mound of dirt is needed for future purposes, having to be upgrading of the site. But I'll look into whether to take that address because it's certainly the case that that could distract from the achievements that are happening at the park.
Well, there was one before, some quotes like, "You started saying on street as a relationship out, clamped laid out a couple of years ago." So I don't think it's a threat. I think the building itself. And so I just want to alert you to that. It doesn't work good. I think that, you know, Mission Park has a long way to go. And I think that they have, Mission Park has not got a market to, to that guy to this point. And by it being brand-new building, being built as well, it deserves a lot more than this one. Pile of dirt is showing that nothing's like going on, but it is happening. We also had a situation along the street when we were vacating the alley a few weeks back, maybe even one and a half ago, Mr. Al Farothers. And he was taken over the lot per your press conference you had from the home. Mr. Corliss company came in. He got this alley vacated, had been working with him for like two or three years, looked, you know, just property, trying to get addressed over the area. The current day, we've been trying to work with the parks department to get the trees are down. Well, obviously, they came and put the tree down last week. The tree is not finished, not fully checked out. They look like they just topped it, running, you know, getting the whole tree cleared. They're looking for some eye rights the whole time. And as we are trying to get some people to obviously buy adjacent lots and take it off the adjacent lot, off the city's hands and unify the area, it doesn't fit well when we have a person that actually setting up the place and we want to actually do what we think we're gonna do. So I want to bring that to your attention as well, make sure that that tree is addressed to the betterment of the community ground and that Mr. Al Farothers can move on with the plan for putting it in the barge on that adjacent lot so that Eric must know, like the supposed.
Right. Well, Mr. Corliss standing up to look after that part of your business is exactly the type of thing we wanted to encourage you to have to address some of those things in the mail. So I appreciate your liking and helping us treat that issue more again.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Mayor. Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Mayor, I would like to work with the administration when it comes down to looking at the Pocahontas Indians as they look at coming up closer to the moving in the areas in the sixth district. I was there a month ago, and just a week ago, last week. And that became a discussion with the impact we have now for the city, but in terms of our district. So it will be, we will be the district that will be most impacted by that. And so we just want to, the housing, the businesses, everything, streets, all the different challenges that will happen when it comes down to that issue.
Appreciate that. We'll keep you informed where we were and also have to make an introduction to the vacant abandoned.
Thanks. I appreciate it.
I will give, the Pocahontas will be in town tomorrow for the city meetings, correct?
I think that's right. Yeah, I think there's a public meeting. I'm not sure on the end at what time.
I think they have some private meetings tomorrow. I think a public meeting is maybe Thursday.
I thought it was Thursday.
The other question I have, I'm doing. I think is, Mr. Shum, I think is it's, is it six on Thursday?
Please, please.
No. In regards to the, is there just gonna be one common meeting on the streets?
There's one final time, yes.
Anything further?
Sorry, just before I go up, my, I'd like to mention that I see that an ambulance here from the library. I wanted to invite the council, I've been in communication with the leadership of the Sancho County Public Library and all of the historic preservation commission. My belief is that we can move toward a compromise that is historically successful, but also does not frustrate and grow funds in the library. And we should keep you updated that we're successful and, or the party is successful in reaching agreement. I do everything we can to try and make sure that that comes about for the council to take final action on decision value, store and possession.
Consensus of this council, or consensus?
Thank you very much.
See, let me know. May I have a motion to use all of it?
So move. All in favor of that? Aye, aye, aye.
Committee of the Southern Council is now in session. This portion of the conference meeting, where bills are given a second and a public hearing, I wish to share with you that the bill that will be before us this evening has had a committee level discussion, recommendation, as well as a public hearing. With the proposed ordinance, there's a going ordinance, a report from the staff members of various counties will be given. In other situations, the formal preparation and the proposed ordinance will immediately file committee to court. Then the formal preparation will come on time. Additional rules governing this portion of the committee of the whole should be a layer board keep, the latter that copies. At this time, we have Bill forty-two twelve, forty-three twelve, as well as forty-four twelve, that deals directly with the two thousand thirteen budget. I'm going to ask the common council attorney to read into the records and for the agents as well, information pertaining to the processes as well as the timeline. Council members are given the confirmation during the personnel finance committee that may have to pass.
Thank you, Councilmember White. The three bills that Councilmember White identified, forty-two twelve is levying taxes and fixing the rate of taxation, forty-three twelve appropriating ordinance, forty-four twelve is also appropriating ordinance, identifying construction to, to, and why it's a part. By state law, the city council has the legal responsibility of passing a duty order to require single purpose coverage that we mentioned already. The council always has the authority to do women within the body, however, they do have the opportunity to express the city's operations. Any line of logic, they might, uh, do have entry. Tonight is the only opportunity for the public to have a vote heard when the government is built. So we do honor anyone else's decision. So if you say you're aiming to draft, we're going to have a motion to hear all three of the two delegates, the representatives of the presentation by the mayor, our assistant fellow, Mr. Mark Gill, and anyone else from the department. The council will then answer all the questions asked and, uh, and, we want to begin a little bit on, 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 Uh, and within the infrastructure category, I think it's safe to say that, uh, the particular elements of infrastructure that we have heard the most, CPAC, about from the council, uh, concerns, uh, personal sidewalks for our citizens, uh, as well as the streets and the quality of streets more generally. And, uh, overlapping with some of these, uh, are the concerns by economic development, the quality of life, making sure that our corridors, the gateway for our city, uh, look good. So, uh, again, I know that, uh, council members can do that job, uh, of expressing, uh, what council members' priorities are, but, uh, wanted to show some of the things that we thought we were, of course, in this process, and work to incorporate in the budget. Uh, with that, I'd like to turn it over to our city controller, Mark Fields, to think you drew some in more detail, uh, how we're, uh, our budget proposal.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm talking to you, I'm taking control of it with office and the call board, so, uh, before I start, just quickly, I would like to say, uh, I really have to say gratitude to, uh, to council member and, uh, Chair, Chairperson, and, uh, Karen's wife, for her efforts so far. I mean, we, we've had meetings as, uh, as the council attorney, now it's been a significant effort, I know there's still a lot to be done, but I, I just greatly appreciate her, uh, for working, uh, with us, as we're putting things together. There's a lot of pieces that go into a budget, in our city, this accomplished document I learned, uh, from the new person on the block, and I thank you for the guidance and, uh, and some really helpful from the governor. I also, uh, would like to recognize, uh, John Murphy, our Deputy City Controller, and, uh, Ron Johnson, Director of Finance. Uh, John Murphy, uh, knows a lot of what goes on in the city, and is extremely, uh, critical of helping to make sure we do the right thing every time, and have the expertise and funds that we have to maintain the current credit rating that we have in the city, uh, that really is a tribute to what we're doing. Uh, similarly, Ron Johnson is our, is our cash person, keeping track of hundreds of millions of dollars, uh, really greatly, greatly appreciate it. And then finally, just thanks to the Department of Fiscal Affairs, who helped put this budget together, uh, we also spent a great deal of time with them. So, uh, just wanted to make those comments, we really appreciate it. Um, so, uh, moving on, I wanted to, uh, talk about the first of budget process and components, we try to keep this, I'll say it, at a fairly high level, but just to be clear on what we're being asked to do, what statutes help us to do. Uh, we do, uh, the city administration, the mayor does propose a annual city budget for the common council. Uh, that budget is really divided into six main categories, and, uh, those categories represent actually ninety different pots of money. So, uh, that is a significant, uh, record-keeping activity to keep track of. The general fund, the general fund is the fund where, uh, some of the primary city business goes on, it would be, uh, certainly where public safety, police, and fire, uh, where CO has its fund, it's also where the clerk, of the city, the council, the mail, administration finance, a federal manager, and general fund. Uh, we also have special revenue funds, which are primarily related to, uh, our parts department, which is one we will highlight here in the meeting. Uh, then there's that special capital fund, they are what they say, in which we are paying our bills for money that we borrow from the house. Uh, enterprise funds, as was noted earlier by council, uh, council attorney, uh, the enterprise funds are really the utility of this council, okay? Uh, both our wastewater and water, as well as our building department and our, uh, solid waste, our trash service, yeah. Uh, internal service fund, our funds are set up to take care of some of the city's bills, particularly related to insurances, whether they be insurances that we buy to protect us against, uh, risks that we face as a city, uh, or the insurance that we provide to, uh, to employees in the way of public insurance, if that's what you're mentioning. And then finally, trust and agency fund, are really primarily pension fund related to both our fire and police. The, uh, council does hold a budget here that has been noted to reduce our vote of admission. Uh, the council, as, as the council attorney pointed out, the council does form a team to, uh, need approval authority for each fund that's been presented here. So, uh, we look forward to talking about that. We do talk about elements as we go through the whole presentation, as well as if we get to, uh, the final discussion in the coming weeks. Uh, two things, just looking at what's undergirding in addition to what the mayor was set for, uh, the key components first was, let's make sure that we are that, funding the administration and council priorities. Uh, these are, this funding is what's taking place in those six areas I talked about, what isn't in this budget at this point is what goes on our redevelopment commission, and that is a separate budgeting activity that's done by the redevelopment commission, uh, focusing on, on tip dollars, and, uh, there'll be a separate discussion with redevelopment commission, uh, next month, to go over that budget. But, uh, our focus in, in this is to, again, those administration and council priorities that we can't address, we wanted to do that in the most effective and efficient way. Um, we also are focused on investing in city infrastructure, uh, particularly parks, particularly our roads, particularly downtown. Uh, there are a number of community priorities, but, uh, there's been a commitment, talking about the quality of life, I think, had another discussion, that includes with citizens as well as within the administration, certainly within council, that we have a number of beautiful parks. Many of them could use some additional work, and, uh, we're looking to include those in our budget for two thousand and thirteen. In addition, I just wanted to highlight this, we are, uh, focused on leveraging the stress in our CED, the Community Development Department, which is soon to be renamed Community Investment. There's been a, uh, reorganization there to have us more appropriately focused with other organizations in the county. How can we work better together to make businesses, making business a little easier, more equitable and less stressful? There are a number of areas we focus on there, Scott Ward has been, has been charging, making that happen, and that's reflected in some changes that we made in the structure, uh, to link salary to our budget. Uh, we, we commit certainly to fully funding our public safety personnel, police and fire, so there was, uh, certainly a focus there, as we've done some additional spending on the public safety levels, to talk about a couple minutes. Uh, there's also a focus on efficiency. Uh, we have been focused on not having a net increase in, in city personnel levels, uh, so that we can continue to provide services on an efficient basis, but also pretty effective. Uh, in doing that, we also were able to provide a two percent pay increase, which is committed to the budget for all categories of, of, of personnel, that was both a placeholder for our police and fire, as well as for teachers, which is a contract that we previously negotiated in two thousand and thirteen, uh, as well as for civil employees. And then finally, uh, a green initiative, and as part of, I think, a shared vision of government, the, the mayor and the council, what are we doing to, uh, have smaller carbon footprint, apart from our energy initiatives, we, what are we doing to do a better job? One thing I'm looking at is, uh, achieving a ten percent reduction in fuel consumption. Well, we can't necessarily control the cost of gasoline and fuel that goes in, but we certainly can focus on what can we do to consume less fuel in our vehicles, and part of that is already having made a commitment, to buy four new, uh, complete natural gas P and G, uh, solid waste trucks, that we'll get into later this year, and looking to have greater discussions in two thousand and thirteen. Um, looking at some of the numbers, what I'd like to do is, uh, not spend any time on each of every one, uh, but I would like to just look at some of them, thematically, what we're seeing in the way of how we, the numbers are moving in the city. What, while focusing on the sigle, it's on the, on the right side of the screen, looking at two thousand and twelve amended budget, and then our two thousand and thirteen code budget, looking at what's changed that's taken place. When you look at it in total, we have a number of approximately two hundred and eighty-seven million dollars spending for two thousand and twelve, with the amended budget as well as, uh, for two thousand and thirteen, I'm saying, it's just, it's readily going to be stat for the year. Uh, similarly, uh, showing, uh, in, you know, balanced fashion, expenditures also about two hundred and eighty-seven million dollars. The, uh, the balance that's taken place is here in this line in the revenue, which indicates at least for two thousand and twelve or thirteen, a used-to fund balance, in which there was thirteen million dollars, uh, in two thousand and twelve, that was, uh, budgeted, and then almost twenty-four million dollars in two thousand and thirteen. Those lines are primarily reflective of the fact that, uh, we are continuing to borrow money as part of our consent decree with the, uh, with the EPA government, we are borrowing money to make investments in our sewer system specifically, and, uh, some of the compliance workflow with the PSO, uh, we are spending money that we have been borrowing, and we will continue to do so over the next twenty years. Uh, is the largest infrastructure commitment for the city I think has ever had, and, uh, uh, great changes are being made by, by, uh, uh, the, uh, there is a lot of retired director of public worksmen, and the entire public works group specifically focused inside in, uh, in, uh, in wastewater, that, uh, we are doing that as cost-effectively as we can, and some significant strides have been made to bring that number down from the original, uh, estimated amount of over five hundred million dollars, and, uh, the work will continue on, but in the meantime, we want to make meaningful progress on that effort, and we intend to do that with the spending here in, uh, two thousand and thirteen, as opposed to two thousand and twelve. Just to, just to write some detail of what the revenue streams are, uh, I'll highlight some of the biggest numbers. One, charges for services, almost ninety-seven million dollars, that is reflective of our utility, uh, it's, uh, the line's sure there. Uh, second, we see, uh, property taxes, we're estimating, or projecting forty-eight point four million property taxes in two thousand and thirteen, uh, that's, again, uh, almost eighteen percent, of, of, a little over eighteen percent of our budget. Those property taxes, and we have some detail later, I want to, uh, the property taxes really come to us, and we break them up between the general fund, as well as our parts department, as well as the debt fund that we have, and the mortgage. In terms of expenditures in two thousand and thirteen, you can see the largest number, again, not surprising in terms of where we're spending money, it's in the water and sewer, that similarly, that's sort of the revenue, it's also a role to spend, it's going on again with the capital projects I talked about. Um, in addition, we see twenty-eight percent of our budget going to a little over eighty million dollars to, uh, for public safety against fire and, and police, and all the, not only the personnel, but also the vehicle, the capital costs that we have there, uh, and the services that go on in providing the states. Uh, the, uh, the budget does require us to go into a tax levy discussion. The numbers before your eyes will begin to go off over, we have it already. And the reason is that, because of our team, you know, that they actually require us to do. So if you go with me for just a moment, we're, we're trying to determine what amount of property taxes we're going to be, that's really the, that's the goal here. And, uh, others, looking at what has been distorted, and I take, I take it not as a surprise to most folks, since we've, uh, gone into the circuit breaker, uh, we're limiting the amount of property taxes that we charge, that could, may could have been making, making home ownership more portable. I should have come at, at a fight for, uh, city government, and, uh, that we can look at, going back to two thousand and nine, we can see that in two thousand and nine, the collective dollars of property taxes, about fifty-two million. Uh, they went down a little bit in ten, to forty, a little, one hundred and fifty million, down again, eleven to forty-eight million. We are expecting them to increase in two thousand and twelve to forty-nine point four million, we receive property taxes twice per year in June and December. In June, we see, that's been received, with a strong receipt, uh, a little bit better than we expected, the second came as a little bit smaller, so we still feel comfortable that that forty-nine point four million dollar number is a good one. For two thousand and thirteen, uh, we've, uh, taken, uh, what might be a little bit of a conservative approach, when we did not overestimate what it might be, given the challenges that we're seeing in, in our, in our market, particularly if we look at what would the economy look like in two thousand and seven, maybe slow down a little bit in two thousand and twelve. So, if we go into the calculations for a moment, uh, we first look at what is the assessed value of our costs in the city of South Bend for its township? That number is just over, uh, two point three billion dollars. Uh, we are expecting a power of one percent increase in assessed value. The goal for, for all of us in, in, I think, the city government is, uh, economic development, and that does mean increasing the assessed value. It demonstrates strength in our community, uh, it provides, allows us to provide open levels of services that people will go to expect, it also makes it attractive for people who want to live or play, invest in South Bend. So, we're looking at a one percent increase, we're being, I think, reasonably cautious, uh, we were more aggressive last year, three percent, and then we came up one, so we're trying to really stay conservative here in two thousand and thirteen. That computes for a tax rate, and that's the, uh, percentage of those into the levy, uh, about three point one four percent. Uh, the tax rate is simply something that's established through our assessed value, uh, calculation. The tax levy then, in dollar terms, is really just some math, and without doing the math, the calculation is seventy-four point four million dollars. Because of the circuit breaker, we are projecting, uh, uh, a reduction in about twenty million dollars, so you can see that trend has been increasing, uh, because of, the circuit breaker's intention is that as, as values go up, value taxes are supposed to be fixed based on the limits of the set for residency and rental property, uh, and personal. Uh, so the net tax number's fifty-three point eight, uh, collection rate we saw is ninety percent, uh, looking at what happened in over, if we had two thousand and twelve, that may be, that may be conservative as well. Uh, the concern we have is that we, again, we know there's going to slow down, we're not sure what the gap goes, and we'll be, we'll certainly see that in the prior three years, the rate was around ninety percent, so we do not want to be overly aggressive and budget more than what we have. So, uh, ninety seven number we use, and that gives us, uh, our, uh, forty-eight point four million property taxes around two thousand and thirteen. We've taken the, uh, full budget, and then broken it out just into the civil city, and, uh, the other here was to take out the impact of, of our, um, enterprise bond, the utility company, because we know that that's been a continuing, uh, investment, we are borrowing money, as I said earlier, we are seeing some increase in, in rates regarding this, the sewer rates, and so we would continue to expect to see increasing revenue and expenditures there. So now, just to look at purely what's going on in the city outside of utilities, uh, we put up, uh, a slide that's just showing that if we look at what the trend has been, uh, first of revenue perspective, it certainly has been an increasing one. I'm, uh, jumping over to two thousand, two thousand and nine, that, uh, that was a hiccup in the sense of the year, called, or delayed, property taxes late going out, the money that was collected, uh, in long term in two thousand and nine, so that was going to be average. But we see the increase of going from one hundred and fifty-six million in two thousand and ten, up to one hundred and sixty-eight million in twelve, and then, oh, back a little bit now, two thousand and thirteen, one hundred and sixty-five million. Looking at the individual amounts, you see that the changes of, of general fund, which is, our most core of property taxes, is flat. Uh, that's the one that we talk about all the time, one is actively a balanced budget, and it's one of the most precious. Uh, additionally, we're looking at, at special revenue, special revenue is a combination of, of funds, but primarily, once again, we talked about our parks, uh, but also, uh, community development and grants that we receive. This is somewhat of a part of officials' law, and we talked about this in the budget hearing, that, uh, related grants are budgeted, uh, we are, we are confident that we'll see a renewal of our grant in two thousand and thirteen, but because of the way that they're, uh, provided through our government, we can't show that in our budget now, we'll, we expect to see that, uh, during two thousand and thirteen. Uh, additionally, we'll see some increases in the internal service fund, and a little bit in the pension trust. Uh, the, uh, revenue increases here, the, those monies are actually collected through the other government accounts, and, uh, the reason for those amounts going up is that we aren't, uh, increasing the charges for our insurances and our, and our pension in two thousand and thirteen. So if I can draw it down to the expenditures line, we can see that while our spending in the general fund is, again, a flat, it's down slightly, and similarly in special revenue standard, that much regarding large grants and, and, uh, federal funding and community development, we are seeing an increase, again, in our internal service fund and the pension trust, uh, internal service particularly highlights our health insurance. We do have a structural issue in the city's health insurance plan, and that is to say that we have seen, um, uh, an increasing number of claims over the last few years, uh, reflective of, of an aging workforce that we have, and, uh, uh, miserable company, it's not unlike any other city, or probably any other company in America that has a, an average of, uh, older, uh, population workers, and I'll do myself in that category. Uh, so, we understand that we have an, an, an issue there, uh, we, we have made an adjustment in the budget in two thousand and thirteen, to provide for a ten percent increase in our health insurance cost. We'll be doing a much larger effort in two thousand and thirteen to engage both council as well as our various bargaining units, as well as civil city and county agency. What can we be doing to, as our wellness initiative that we have, we think we are seeing some success with, at the same time saying, what else can we do to structure our health insurance that makes it, uh, responsive to the needs of folks today, and provides them the coverage that they need, but also, uh, allows us to look at other ways for us to be healthier, to act healthier, and hopefully do healthy things as we try to control that cost, again, taking, uh, an issue that every, uh, every company, every entity in the country faces right now with healthcare costs. Um, and similarly, I just wanted to show that while we're spending about twenty-three million dollars in two thousand and thirteen total, once we take out the enterprise fund, you can see that that, that use of cash is about six point four million, which is a reduction from two thousand and twelve. That money consists of primarily nearly three categories of activities, uh, that we're spending money on. First would be parks, uh, we made a commitment that funds, and the capital improvements are parts department, which we think is a good investment in our city, and will repay, uh, we can pay it in time. Uh, secondly, we do have a health insurance, and why other insurance costs are reflective in that, uh, used to fund for, uh, two thousand and thirteen, and, uh, finally, we are, uh, making an adjustment, uh, in that, uh, for, uh, some, uh, capital needs, capital needs that we have, uh, particularly, uh, we're, we're looking at fire departments, we're looking at, uh, spending a little money to, uh, do the right thing in terms of some, uh, stations that we know need, need to be addressed, uh, one of them in particularly near term, others in relatively, uh, short term, next couple of years, so we're taking steps on that as well. Just thematically show, uh, all of our spending, again, to, to the enterprise fund, and showing a spend off in the last, last couple of years. Um, I want to take a moment to go over our tax collections, just particularly the, the different categories that we talked about quite a bit. We spent quite a bit of time on the property taxes, to show the trend, and go off the, the, uh, the timing issue of the four-eight, oh-nine, which you see in our, our property tax collection, have been in that, in that high forty million range, forty, forty-nine, fifty million range the last, uh, four years. Uh, in addition, we like to look at our, our co-its, our county option income tax, uh, that money has, as you can see, it's declined from the high in two thousand and nine, of eight point three million dollars, uh, it has gone up, uh, in, uh, this year, two thousand and twelve, to eight point six. That is a result of the era that the state of Indiana identified, in which we got a major cash boom, of, of, of two point three million dollars over all of the, uh, local option tax. Uh, the benefit there is that we were able to, as we had not much of that fund, we were unaware of it, we were able to take that money and just put it into our, into our, into our accounts, and have that money available for a future, uh, uh, critical need that one might identify. Uh, so, looking now at two thousand and thirteen, and looking at the county option income tax, you see that number's probably about a million dollars, so, while we, while we banked the additional cash in two thousand and twelve and two thousand and thirteen, we're still doing better than where we were in two thousand and eleven by about, uh, six hundred thousand dollars. Uh, that's giving us some flexibility in our budget. Uh, additionally, in the, the economic development, the income tax, that too, uh, having a, a nice bump up in two thousand and twelve, over nine million, we're now at eight point three for the forecast, which has been confirmed. We're now at eight point three for the forecast, which has been confirmed, uh, by the state, and at a million dollars higher than what it was in two thousand and eleven. Uh, finally, uh, I just want to highlight the public safety local option tax, again, showing all this bump up in two thousand and twelve. The public budget we understand will be just over six point one million, if we see that we expect. Given that level, I'll just take a moment to note that in our budget, we have the fact showing, uh, the utilization of some of that, uh, public safety wallet money, uh, which is in excess of what we expect to have on balance. Uh, and so, we are spending some of that money in our two thousand and thirteen budget here to cover some of the public safety costs. So we're increasing the number of both, uh, police officers and firefighters that are covered by the public safety. And quickly, a quick comment on, uh, the gas wing tax and the front wheel tax, you see those numbers in every flat the last few years. We do have some structural issues in our motor vehicle tax, and I think those are well known by many people in Washington. We have more fuel efficient cars, people are generally driving a little bit less, part of that's economic, part of that's just the way people live today, and yet the tax has not changed. So overall, please, not to see gas wing tax go up again to the civil city, that does create some pressure on our, on our infrastructure, which we still need to take care of the roads, and yet we're not seeing any change in that, which may be fine by motor vehicle highway tax. Now, the other revenue column, I think those are, those are significant numbers. It's a combination of everything from driver, our, our course, our critical handling, proceeds that we get from the state, to the paying of lower taxes, of over five million dollars that are, that are enterprise budget, or utilities make for us, given the services that they absorb from the civil city, while they're not tax paid. Uh, in addition, the biggest number there is really the transfers that go along with the city, which we showed earlier, those internal funds, in which we have the general fund, the parks department fund, which has been going to fund whether it be, uh, health insurance costs, or pension costs, or simple moving money from the public safety, uh, public safety local option tax into the general fund to cover, uh, public safety. So, um, getting to the end here, uh, enterprise funds, we talked about them in general, the total revenue in two thousand and thirteen was actually ninety-eight point two million. Uh, the expenditures are, are about seventeen million dollars over that, one fif- one hundred and fifteen million. Again, as reflective of the, 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 the view of the deficit, uh, the city budget is done on a cash basis, so we follow money in prior periods in two thousand and eleven, uh, and in two thousand and twelve, we're borrowing money, and we're looking to spend it during two thousand and thirteen as part of the C S O, taking as part of the civil construction. So for the highlights, our enterprise funds, they are structured to be self-sustaining, and if they're all large, they, they very much are. Uh, the building department is, uh, is showing up, uh, positive cash flow, and continues to be strong in two thousand and thirteen, even at a reduced level, but the building department's been operating under the last couple of years, given the economy. Similarly, on water, and we saw the operations budgets are operating in the black, they're operating positively within the budget, uh, and providing some small surplus, while still providing, as the mayor noted earlier, that the big river, which still provides state water, for a lot of drinking water, we don't even think about, and certainly are doing that in, in, in excellent manner, in addition to having, uh, water resources that are by the envy of, of many, uh, and particularly kind of on. In addition, we're increasing the improvement of our waste treatment and the work that they must do for the C S O plans. Our solid waste product, the, the, uh, the trash pickup, which we would think about, continues to modernize with equipment and fleet. If you own an operational budget that shows a small deficit, uh, in the enterprise funds in two thousand and thirteen budget, uh, we've done that because every, every category within that fund is a decrease in cost from two thousand and twelve to two thousand and thirteen. As personal, in terms of benefits, in terms of, of services that they're using, the only increase is actually in capital. I mentioned earlier that we made, we made a purchase of four C and G trucks. We're making other improvements in efficiency, uh, through investments in vehicles for the, uh, solid waste group. Uh, so far, that has proven to be extremely effective, as you look at where we have been in terms of, of, uh, the level of solid waste performance, in terms of picking up the trash on a timely and consistent basis. In the meantime, seeing there's been a reduction in injuries that have taken place because of our use of more modern equipment, and the fact that we haven't changed the, the, we haven't changed the feed, so they were trashing in a number of years. Finally, just to highlight the number, talking about the C S O plan, that in two thousand and thirteen, we do have an additional bond, about twenty-one point two million dollars built into, into the budget at this point in time. And as we get closer to that next year, uh, we'll revive that to see what actually, uh, the market would determine to be appropriate. And importantly, we use our financial advisors, uh, as part of the utility, to say what is the appropriate amount, given the commitment that we have under the consent decree that the government has, and what we can need to continue to invest in, uh, in the near term. I mentioned earlier that there's been a great deal of effort trying to reduce that overall cost in the twenty year period of time, where we do not yet have the opportunity to have the federal government review for what has been done. There's only two opportunities in that consent decree, the first one isn't for another couple of years. In the meantime, we have to meet to the purpose of that consent decree, we're doing that by making the investments as outlined, and doing it the most cost effective way we can. In the meantime, taking advantage of those investments, uh, just to last, I would say, uh, hopefully, to help create a new landscape, as we make some of those, uh, uh, those, uh, bits that people are, you know, a little bit frustrated by, or we've got some challenges with them. Uh, I hope, I think that we're working to get better and better at, in terms of overall communication, as well as schedules and maintain those schedules. We're certainly looking for great opportunities that we will improve how the city works by the support of the C S O plan, so hope that's at least, uh, something that, that's a positive in the system. So for final thoughts, um, the annual overall city budget, two hundred and eighty-seven million dollars. I mentioned that deficit of almost twenty-four million dollars in spending, I'm really assured it's an ideal capital investment. I'm sure the C S O plan, but also reflective of what is a, a clear, uh, structural issue we have in our health insurance. Also, uh, making some investments in some environmental, uh, opportunities that we have in the city. So we are spending down some balances that we are not going to receive the additional funds for, uh, required, particularly add to the student baker, uh, area. Talked about general holding balance, fifty-four point two million dollars. And, uh, just, again, confirming that for city budget, the first investment of both modernizing the city infrastructure, talk about that, as well as curbs and sidewalks or roads, including our neighborhoods, and our focus of both illegal dumping, as well as vacant abandoned housing, and knowing very clearly that that vacant abandoned housing is not meant to say that the million dollars that's been put into the budget, which is double over what it was in two thousand and twelve, it's not the biggest one, it's several houses, but rather, we're looking to use that money, hopefully in a reasonable way that we can, uh, do the best we can to beautify, uh, the neighborhoods that are compacted by this, or at least improve that. And I know that, uh, the vacant abandoned housing task force, the head president mayor, is well responsible, but, uh, Congressman Scott is working hard to promote, uh, what we can really access in the future, helping to get further, get our arms around that issue. Uh, in addition, we talked about, uh, youth violence. The youth violence program in the city is actually in the parks department, and so we have, uh, put additional money and people into the parks department budget to address youth violence issues. In addition, we've talked about, uh, the mayor mentioned the three-one-one, and responding more effectively to citizens' needs and questions. So we're excited about leaving ourselves into a three-one-one environment where, where for non-emergency services or questions or information need, there can be one number that citizens can call, uh, that someone can answer phone and respond to their query, or to take their issue and get recorded and get, uh, it routed to the right place in the city, through one phone call to get that issue addressed. Uh, finally, uh, measuring our performance, uh, we need to show how we are doing. Uh, providing key performance indicators, uh, for ourselves to guide how we are doing, establish a benchmark, to show how we're performing against that benchmark, to share that information, uh, in a regular, consistent way with the council, as well as the citizens, we're looking to share that information so we can see how are we doing? Are we doing well? Or, or might we need some help? Uh, so with that, I respectfully ask the council to approve our, should we be questioned?
Thank you. At this time, uh, prior to moving to the posterior portion regarding the neighboring jail, and, um, in light of the fact that the council has a special meeting scheduled for Wednesday, and four at six P M., where each person will have opportunity to really address the budget, to ask additional questions, or to clarify areas as well, I want to make sure that there is not necessarily any question that you might have, that you would like to address at this particular time. Just a moment to start and go, start with, uh, first, Hendrix, Congressman McCall?
No questions on that.
Congressman Henry Davis, second, Hendrix. Congressman Madam Shane?
No questions, thank you.
No questions.
Just have one regarding, um, the redevelopment. In, in terms of, um, we don't have all the numbers because it's a different budget. But, um, are you aware of, there goes, are there goes similar to the same goes, there's similar goes as the council, as the mayor goes? Yes, the budget, yes. The world, you say though?
Yes, uh, if they're still, they're draft, uh, they're to be discussed here in October. Uh, a couple of days, they are structured to, for, in general, respond to economic development issues. Uh, there's been a discussion about whether it be a focus on corridors and what they were doing there. Um, we're investigating, we're not, we're not at all certain, we're looking at vacant abandoned houses are not too popular to use our side of those monies for that. Uh, in addition, just saying what else can we be doing, I'm speaking to, make sure, make sure that we're, uh, to hear into the, the requirement itself of, 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 yes, I would say that very much, sure.
And in a follow-up, when does, when does the redevelopment budget have to be approved?
Um, uh, we have, we've scheduled it to be approved by the end of October, October twenty-seventh. Uh, the effort that we made within the administration is to begin to bring all these budgets together and move on, so we can look at it more holistically. Uh, historically, that, that redevelopment budget's been done in January of the actual budget year. And, uh, so we moved that back three months, and so we're working hard to, to meet that October date, uh, with the expectation that we bring these, we bring all the budgets together, uh, in two thousand, two thousand and fourteen budget cycle.
Thank you.
Thank you, Congressman Flory, Congressman Mayor Davis.
Yes, ma'am, I have a lot of questions. I'd be, in fact, a lot of them, because we'll, we'll go back and, and we'll talk about it on, on Wednesday. Can you pull up slide three? Yeah, don't worry about it. I just, uh, I numbered two on slide three there, we're committing to targets and rewarding performance. Have you guys even started to go to each department and give that kind of benchmarking? What we're gonna look at, and how, what, how are you gonna reward performance?
Uh, yes, President, we have put together, uh, and each department put together their budgets. They were, they were required to create key performance indicators, uh, that they, that they were, to be best practices within their department. So we're looking at, uh, some more information will be collected by other municipalities that they could look to. And so we look to have both benchmarks or the target status, so we put that into the budget, and they've already begun in draft fashion to be able to, uh, monitor their success toward those numbers. We're looking to bring those all together in a draft fashion here in November and December, so that we move into two thousand and thirteen. While I suspect it will not come without its hiccups, uh, the effort is that we'll begin to have those numbers pulled together that can be reviewed.
Okay, that's, I thought we haven't, we haven't got those yet.
Uh, we have pulled the three-one-one, what we did do is within the
I understand that, but there's not. Well, how are you gonna reward performance?
Uh, it is still a work in process, President, yeah.
Okay. Well, that's, my point is, if we're gonna put this up here, that's some of the questions that I'm asking, um, and I'm, whoever else is thinking, wanna ask, or whatever. For the sake of time, but if I'm looking at something up there, you know, we've, we've been, some people have been on the council for a while. Again, it's not an indication of your administration, that you could probably put this up as the same one that was in two, or two, seven, but with the exception of numbers and stuff, I just wanna be, for the sake of the new administration, I'm looking for something that we haven't seen in previous administrations of, the new group, hey, this is what we're after, this is what we wanna do, like this is what the mayor's gonna paint on, a refreshing look. But I wanna make sure, for a refreshing look, we've got the ability to do it. And when I see rewarding performance, I haven't seen anything that just come to the council in, in, in regards to maybe monetary rewards, something like that. So if we're gonna do that, let us know how you guys want to do it, as opposed to, hey, thumbs up, great job, which is great, but if we're gonna do this, I sort of doubt on that. Um, and then the next slide, if you wanna pop that on there? Wouldn't the administration, one of your top, uh, D and E in economic development? I don't see that unless someone elected to put that on there, as you were.
No, absolutely, uh, no.
Well, maybe it is, it's an inadvertent thing.
Not inadvertent, um. Part, part of what we're just trying to do is emphasize those things that, uh, we're addressing in particular in the general fund budget, uh, because this was referred to earlier, we're, uh, sharing priorities, but also undertaking a number of parallel investing processes, that will lobby out current development activities. And we're gonna be concentrating on redevelopment. But I certainly would not regard vacant abandoned housing as a different fundamental from that knowledge of development. I would think any perhaps most important thing we can do to save this for that knowledge of development, uh, when it comes to things we can accomplish.
But if I read that, I don't see that on there, to start with, which is, that's fine. Uh, I think, just the other, the other in regards to, especially the funding of the public safety. So I think we talked about that, where we talked about two thousand and eleven, one tenth of the year, there was not a beat that worked the day shift on the northwest side of council. Hopefully, that's gonna be addressed at some point, either through the police and fire, or whatever, which I'm not a part of, but if we're gonna, again, we're talking about forward funding, police and fire, let's be honest, and what we're gonna assess when it comes to doing that. And then I'll just say the rest for one, the, the last one, um, has to do with the youth violence. And again, you know, I appreciate everybody's gonna work, but wouldn't you think youth violence, if the plan should come from the police department as opposed to the parks department?
I haven't responded on that, the mayor, he might have responded to that question. A couple did. You found that that problem of youth violence is something that all start comprehensive solutions, not only law enforcement solution. There's no question, the police department is going to be one area, perhaps, uh, primary areas in which we have that. But our behavior is to be regarded narrowly as something that can only be confronted with police action. Uh, we also believe that some of the most promising and outstanding work that we've already seen, uh, when it comes to heading off comprehensively, some of the factors that lead to youth violence and problems of quality of life for youth in our community, uh, has actually been in the parks department, we're trying to build on a successful model that already exists in parks and recreation. And that's why I treat biological protection, the house and the budget, was obviously a cross cutting priority, that, that is not only, parks not only quality of life, not only inclusion.
Okay, but, I wanna make that later, 'cause I disagree with you. I appreciate that, what you're trying to do with that, but I think that there's more that can be done, and I don't think it should be the responsibility, like the controller said, that our youth violence program should stem from the park department. I think it does have to be a whole comprehensive plan, but we'll talk about that on another date. That's all, I haven't just found no further questions, ma'am. Oh, you bet.
And yet, I, I think that the public safety that meeting on Wednesday, because you have the opportunity to hear from me, to hear the conversation at that time, like I think the administration, um, the mayor, uh, for his presentation regarding these three deals. At this time, we're moving to the posterior portion, is there any young persons wishing to speak in support of the forty-two dash twelve, forty-three dash twelve, or forty-four dash twelve? Anyone present wishing to speak in support of these three deals? And here, seeing number one, I realize to ask, is there anyone present wishing to speak in opposition regarding these three deals? If you come to the poll, you can state your name and address of the emergency.
Jesse Davis, T L O, ten thirty-five, South Bend, Indiana. Um, I, I don't know if I'm necessarily speaking against the, but I do have some issues with it. I mean, uh, you know, they talk about communicating with the citizens, uh, solving problems, and spending resources wisely. Obviously, I haven't appeared on many occasions, uh, disputing those facts. Uh, communication seems to be a key problem. Uh, from the fourteen stories to the fourth floor, more left to get outdoors to a citizen, um, there's been a, a, a huge lack of communication. And I'm sure we'll get into that later on. Um, they talk about creating and, uh, you know, helping keep businesses in jobs here. You know, uh, I've actually seen blacklist people, blacklist companies, that deny all they want, uh, to get your friends and families first, and, and not worry about business. You know, youth violence, we, we know about that, because there are no jobs here. And the jobs that are here, I don't know, to support a household, or even some of our youth who are having babies. And so, when they can't earn enough money to make a living and support themselves, they find out that they're going to forget the things they need, which creates a lot of the violence and stuff that we have here. Uh, Mr. Dieter, that, that, that's, that's, our police department Uh, Mr. Dieter, he has, he thinks that our police department plays a huge, huge role in that. You know, we can have all the parts we want, we can have lunches in the parks, we can have grasses in the parks. Uh, grand parts are important, but they're not a strong problem. The police department is here among the key factors in that. Uh, you know, I think they probably have a little more knowledge than the park department people as far as maybe even putting together some youth programs or things for the youth to, uh, occupy themselves. Um, abandoned houses, you know, we, we've heard about this for years, right? They talk about tax spending and more spending and money being much. They, they have all the new taxes to make up for these, uh, property tax gaps. They've increased the new taxes, but yet they keep talking about, hey, we still got tax abandoned houses. Well, how many years is it gonna take them to do that? We've got a school, we're gonna need a school that's probably about five years old, maybe a little over the maximum. There's children running around, I could have run through that neighborhood, but two weeks ago, I shot some kids, took some photos. Within about two block radius, I saw approximately twenty-six homes abandoned, burned down, empty, some of which are very dangerous to the citizens and especially children in that neighborhood. Uh, one of them's been set up for ready to fall down by bull ride, I presume not, the entire force walked down. Uh, these, these have been the, you know, we've been hearing from past administrations and now this one since January. Uh, all the things that we see coming from them, we're not seeing many results. And, uh, it's all hard to keep coming up here, you know, beating out media and saying, hey, what's wrong with them saying? Uh, this three one one line, it's gonna be totally worthless. If you call in and you got a problem or an issue that you think that you see, and they respond to it in the way they've responded to them in the past several years with the previous administration, and also since January with this administration. You, you can send certified letters, you can file lawsuits, so guess what? You get zero response from the mayor's office.
Thank you. Again, if there's anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to these three deals, yes, if you come to the podium.
My name is Timmy, this is Peter, two one five, North Sheridan Street, South Bend, Indiana, four six fifty one nine. You asked me to comment on something, whether it was no specific, no detail, got up with a bunch of numbers, bored me out of my mind. But no specific. It sounds something like what Nick Romney is doing, you want a paycheck, you do whatever. That's my dollar that you're spending. Tell me what you spend in my money, oh, here. Million dollars for housing? You can't fix up any houses with a million dollars. You can't out a lot of houses with a million dollars. But you cannot rehab a lot of houses with a million dollars. What we're asking for seems to be specific, something for the general public to understand. I'm quite sure everybody has a number to get up, they were basically just saying the same thing. I don't know what they were talking about. All we did was talk about numbers, money, and it's coming out of my pocket. She brought up the redevelopment commission, what's their budget? That one is coming out of my pocket too, and we got two different entities here. Doing the same thing, 'cause they're overlapping. I heard that come up. What's going on? Things have to be specific, detailed, and make it common so we can understand. Then we wouldn't have these problems that we have. Parks department can't do it, the police department can't curb youth violence by itself. You need to start talking to parents, you need to start talking to your immediate community, you need to get the whole entire community involved. That's what happens, happens. No one person has the answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, seeing no one, the public hearing, uh, portion going to be three deals. Uh, the polls would like to, like the mayor, the city can vote with me if you like to sign, or the model, or if you have anything questions that you might encourage doing, uh, the public hearing portion. You would have.
So, yeah, I answered for the previous administration. Uh, I can't say that government areas are responsible, it's the role of ours. Uh, I'm proud of the record that we stacked up so far when it comes to such a service. Uh, we've handled hundreds, if not thousands, of strategic requests, uh, everything from the smallest issue in the, uh, backyard to, uh, taking much bigger, and that's the best of our ability. I'm sure it's not satisfied everybody, uh, I doubt that it's possible to satisfy everybody, but we certainly try. And, uh, both the, uh, uh, key performance indicators that we've offered is how we're gonna track whether our office is successful in the investment for the time to make, and things like the two one one time, or the five minutes per the program. That's right, we're not gonna assess the vacant abandoned housing problem with a million dollars. Uh, we cannot, uh, rehabilitate, nor can we narrow down every vacant abandoned home in this city for a million dollars. But we have got to start somewhere. So we are asking, uh, for a substantial increase. We've got a resource that this committee, uh, this city commits to that purpose, and this is why. Uh, we've done our best through the course of this presentation to, uh, try to render it intelligible. Certainly, uh, simply throwing a bunch of numbers on board doesn't tell, we don't explain why. Uh, that's why we walked through a presentation that was intended to be equal parts, uh, of why we're doing what we're doing, what's the big picture, and what's the goal, and strategy, and vision, and things we consider important, and an awful lot of numbers. Uh, I'm sorry if the numbers are boring to some, uh, contestants, I'm sorry, but those numbers are very detailed, uh, which are soft when it comes to transparency. Tried our best to provide both the big picture and the details when it comes to the office. Uh, and certainly our office is happy to clarify any things that may be facing, and we're obviously in a very complex, uh, and wide realm for it.
I just heard the live hearing, praying for one starting, who's the mayor?
Well, just like I had, it's, uh, with the, uh, various documents we have created, uh, to accompany Scott's urging, we are, uh, making all of them available electronically. It is an effort to do that, but we will get them all posted on the website. Now, historically, the website has not been helpful trying to open up an encircled NASA file. So our effort starts to put these to bite, set it pieces by funds and then by, by category. So we, we'll be doing that, and we'll have those on the website, uh, uh, next week, if not by end of this week, but certainly next week, but well before the May, I know, on October eight.
Thank you. At this time, I maintain a motion from Congressman, regarding these three deals, and probably add that.
Yeah, the, uh, they have to be separate, uh, separately. Uh, the proposed motion would be to continue the council portion going with forty-two and twelve, send that to the personal guidance committee and have third reading on, on the record.
So, uh, okay.
This is moving second, all those compared with the motion, I hear you both.
All right.
Those are called the motion period. Now I maintain the motion going with forty-four dash twelve.
Would you like me to do that one also?
All right, I'll continue, forty-four twelve, to the council portion and public hearing, third reading, ten eight twelve. So, second.
This is moving second, all those compared with the motion, I hear you both. Those are called the motion period. Now I maintain the motion going with forty-four dash twelve.
Would you like me to do that one also?
All right, I'll continue, forty-four twelve, to the council portion and public hearing, third reading, ten eight twelve. So, second.
This is moving second, all those compared with the motion, I hear you both. Those are called the motion period. Now, if you're asking, um, please let John Boyd to read, uh, she gives you forty-nine dash twelve, the second reading. This is a new process for the council, and I'm gonna ask our conference attorneys to, uh, I did write the list, we can't even have the copy just to get a brief overview as to why this council is really, uh, approving, uh, the transport process this fiscal year.
Uh, such is, uh, why those people here in, uh, the DM, they're all the same, they take all of the required, uh, questions, uh, uh, come out there, uh, file with the city council, and then have the city council, uh, pass, uh, the city council, one thirty-four, two twenty-two, uh, aim for some more budget. Uh, councilor White told the chairman on this, uh, last week, there is a, uh, thorough, uh, review of the budget and the required, uh, 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 ten for, uh, air transportation.
Sure.
Uh, this is council failed to take action, uh, by the city of Alabama, their budget is frozen at some level there.
Thank you for that review. Mr. Boyd, you seem to have second reading to bill forty-nine dash twelve.
Oh, here I have you, the town council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating, adopting, and approving the South Bend Public Transportation Corporation corporation's twenty thirteen budget and levying the tax and fixing the rate of taxation for the purpose of raising revenue to fund the South Bend Public Transportation Corporation, South Bend, Indiana for a fiscal year ending December thirty-third, twenty thirteen.
Personally, I'm glad the committee has a, uh, public hearing, it's mainly, um, the chairman of the second, February two thousand and twelve, and we send this to the field to the full conference, say the best explanation. At this time, we'd like to invite to the podium representatives from council, as to then, to really give us a brief overview of the field forty-nine dash twelve. We do ask, thank you, that I'd like to take a recommendation.
Hi, could, could we, uh, uh, just do a brief, uh, overview? Uh, for two thousand and thirteen, we're actually set to budget at nine, a little over nine point five million dollars, uh, which means we have a balanced budget for fiscal year two thousand and thirteen. And this budget also assumes that we'll be operating at the same level of service we did for two thousand and twelve. Uh, and for two thousand and thirteen, we just have some, uh, go with some general priorities that we have. Keep a short implementation of a big drop-off system, um, that's on the agenda for fifteen years, the installation of a few, uh, budget elements throughout the fiscal year, which we see a subtle grant. Um, we're looking at maintaining spending service opportunities with edu-, uh, with educational organizations and universities. And also a priority of ours is to replace aging much of the police.
Thank you. Congressman, if you have any questions, uh, the president's already given the field.
No, sure.
Okay, Congressman, let's start directly with Congressman, uh.
No questions.
Congressman Davis.
Yes, thank you. Um, thank you for your support. Uh, one thing that I am concerned about, I have that concern about, is the closures for the, uh, process of routes. I have been for a while. So my next question would be, uh, is there any more changes coming, uh, additional closures of routes, shutdowns of routes? Or are there maybe routes that's gonna be reopened? Any change?
Uh, for two thousand and thirteen, I believe it's two, uh, re-operating some services, uh, that we currently have now. It'll be the same services two thousand and twelve. Um, and service that'll be, uh, based on additional funding before it come in.
Another question. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congressman Davis.
No questions.
Okay, I'll have to move to.
No, you're up.
Okay, thank you so much. I still have to move to the public hearing portion, if there's anyone present wishing to speak in support of the field forty-nine dash twelve. Seeing no one, if there's anyone present wishing to speak in opposition to this deal. We will ask, if you come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, please.
Again, Jackie Davis, P O L ten two five, South Bend, Indiana. Um, I guess I'm more of a fan of the type of question, I was a little confused, he said that their budget is gonna be balanced, that they're gonna maintain the same services two thousand and twelve. But if I'm correct, as I began at two thousand and twelve, with the budget that they already had in place for that just four years, um, there were more routes included and they deleted routes during two thousand and twelve, if I'm correct? So therefore, they should have a little bit of a surplus of money. So, uh, I think Henry's question deserves a little more of an answer there. Are they gonna add any of those routes back, or now what they're gonna do is have surplus of money for the routes that they did track?
Thank you. Is there anyone else, President, wish, wishing to speak in opposition? The public hearing portion is flawed, I realize to ask representatives from the council to come back to the podium and, uh, if you have five minutes, hold your bubble, or have opportunities to get that, with qualified listening.
Members of the House, my name is John Lewinsky, Chairman of the Board, I reside in, I'm Texas, a fourteen oh one, in South Bend Street. To answer this gentleman's question, the reason we made the cuts is because we have the money and we balance the budget based on those cuts. And we don't anticipate paying any more cuts, that is unknown to us, that could change. Uh, but right now, we don't anticipate paying any, again, I just reflect your favorable consideration of the budget.
Thank you. At this time, with council portion, unless there are any additional questions, if there's anything, a motion for you to deal.
A motion for favorable recommendations of forty-nine twelve, okay?
This is moving second, and all those compared with the motion, I hear you both.
All right.
Those are called, okay. Let the record show that, uh, this bill already sent to the full council, was a favorable recommendation, was opposed eight to one, eight in favor of the lot of years, uh, moving this, uh, bill, was a favorable recommendation. But I maintain the motion to rise from committee to the podium. This is moving second, all those compared with.
All right, I see.
Those are called the motion period.
You can have that finally back to the floor, it's a slide. Thank you, ma'am.
For the council round session, Mr. Boyd, he goes there by forty-nine twelve. First reading, one bill of the town council, the city of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating, adopting, and approving the South Bend Public Transportation Corporation's twenty thirteen budget and levying the tax and fixing the rate of taxation for the purpose of raising revenue to fund the South Bend Public Transportation Corporation, South Bend, Indiana for fiscal year ending December thirty-first, twenty thirteen.
Hold it, adopt it, have it, hold it as well. Thank it. There's more than a slide, Mr. Boyd. Mr. Scott.
Hi.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Nice.
Mrs. Schaefer.
Hi.
Dr. Furk.
Hi.
Dr. Varner.
Hi.
Vice President, Kate.
Hi.
Councilmember White.
Hi.
Mr. Furk.
Hi.
President Dieter.
Hi.
Uh, the vote is eight to one.
Thank you.
Proceed to twelve, sixty-six. A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, approving and adopting the Howard Park Neighborhood Master Plan.
Mr. President, we have a meeting.
Good afternoon, the foundation committee met, and we bring the bill, so sixty-six to the full council of the family on board.
Thank you very much. Present a plea for the rule, sit down, so you're, I hear.
Uh, good evening, councilmembers, my name is Jim King with Community Economics Development, office on the fourth floor of the building. Uh, happy to present to you a resolution adopting the Howard Park Neighborhood Master Plan. Um, Howard Park is a neighborhood that lies in the east bank of the St. Joseph River, bound by, uh, Jackson Road on the north, um, and East Street to the east, and, uh, St. Joseph River to the west and south. The, uh, master plan for this neighborhood was completed in two thousand and nine, and, um, this is a neighborhood that is poised for private sector development, uh, it's an exciting neighborhood in close proximity to downtown. And, uh, a great opportunity for development here is with the, uh, availability of the transport site, as you may recall, transport recently, uh, relocated to New Headquarters, uh, by Mission Park, and this ten acre site poses a, uh, great development opportunity in the neighborhood. So given that and the availability of infill lots, I think this neighborhood is, uh, in a great position to see some residential development, uh, as well as to maintain some of the commercial development that's along Jefferson, uh, and in the north of ours. So for that, uh, I'd like to ask for your approval of this resolution, which allows then the redevelopment commission to adopt this, uh, master plan. Uh, this neighborhood is, uh, in the South Bend Central Development Area, and as far as the redevelopment commission adopting this plan, approval is required by the inner finance commission of Congress.
Yes, thank you, any questions?
Yes, sir. You can't thank you for your, uh, report, and I've been going over this, uh, a million times from the current day. I just want, like, uh, two questions. Do you see South Bend well as a force to develop a better, bigger plan, if this such a purpose needs to be made, am I correct? Uh, is that the attitude that we can take right now with the bigger plan?
We're not, uh, in front of you with any, uh, We're not, uh, in front of you with any, uh, any causes.
Uh, I understand that, but with the promise of this developing, will the city start there, participate in the structural improvement?
Uh, it's hard to say, Councilmember Davis, 'cause we're not really sure how the, uh, transport site develops. Ideally, we can find a developer who can do this without needing any support, and, uh, until we issue the RFP, 'cause you're backing developers, we're not gonna know what level of participation is required by the city redevelopment commission in this case.
Okay. Uh, there's a, a plan, obviously, and there's a plan just there, and I'm, I'm just looking for some type of understanding, because this is gonna come before redevelopment, and if we are gonna move forward with it, it's probably gonna come through redevelopment more it comes to see, uh, the common council. And I don't know if the mayor's gonna answer this question or not, but I'm really looking for some type of way of how this is actually gonna be developed, and, and how does this suit to the benefit of the entire city, and the reason why I'm asking this is because there was some money that was devised up beginning this year from, uh, the street district over to Howard Park, obviously, uh, looking for some idea that we have in front of us. I'm not speaking against the idea, I'm just looking for some kind of understanding, how much we're gonna actually participate in making sure this didn't happen, and I don't know, again, if, uh, if we're gonna be so committed to making sure that those infrastructure updates that are on the particular plan that we've looked at, that's been ironed out, are we going to actually participate? And not always be able to a developer to do it, 'cause it's gonna be very difficult for a developer to, again, uh, uh, traffic calming solutions, uh, increase, uh, the pedestrian walkway down the street, uh, neighborhood field, no developer's gonna spend, you know, millions of dollars to do all these things, and I wanna know if we're going to participate, that's the only question I have, so I don't know if Mayor Booney does have the opportunity to answer that question, or, or are you willing to answer that question?
Um, here, if you want, please.
Uh, I can only echo what Mr. King has explained, that, uh, the goal was for there to be a private sector development, certainly, uh, when the city adopted the plan, uh, expresses the, uh, desire of the city for that plan to come into fruition, uh, but I think it would be, uh, it would not be possible at this time to anticipate what level of taxpayer support, participation would be, uh, expected or required in order to get from here to there. Uh, certainly, from a bottom line, budget, or taxpayer perspective, more of these things can be achieved, uh, with, uh, private sector developer dollars at best. Sometimes it's realistic for developers to take on both, or all of the architectural costs associated with development, uh, often it's not. Uh, I can't tell you that, uh, this is some, uh, this is a direction that you want to see, uh, this area take, and so this administration will be very open to participating in investments, uh, if that's required appropriately, and we'll be much closer to fulfilling that vision.
So to answer the yes.
Yes, you definitely will.
Thank you.
Well, just for record, after this meeting, we had this afternoon, I spoke briefly to Mr. Jeff Meyer, and I said, my perspective, approval of the plan did not constitute a, uh, approval of unwarranted or unnecessary extraordinary amounts of city dollars to complete the project. My wish is to, to get involved to the development process and get private development to the extent that we can. We will consider those requests, I think, very seriously, uh, continuously, when city requests money, uh, whether it's a fifth or something like that, to help this along. My, my wish is that this happens without, uh, extraordinary amounts of support, so from the record, I think Mr. Jeff Meyer, if you want, I got it.
Thank you, and that's a direction, uh, profit has been having.
Thank you, sir.
I just wanna clarify my, my position, and I'm not gonna deliver it, but the only thing I want to make sure is that we're clear on our commitment. Nothing happens in this city without the support of the city setting up first, and I know that from my experience. Uh, Mr. Chef Meyer and all the other developers that participated on this, were working with , uh, Austin Council to see to develop a plan that they are looking forward to getting approved today, that's just that we are forced to press the city for this plan, and that's the only thing I'm trying to clarify, I don't want us to walk out of here with the understanding, among the public, thinking that, oh, that's just a plan, and we're not gonna do anything about it because we're in a private development, not so. Nothing happens to any city like that unless you're part of Las Vegas. So I just want us to be clear when we're standing, we're gonna do something, so thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Does that conclude your presentation?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Seen that anyone from the head office like to speak in favor of this? When they step up there, you need your name and address, and give us a short comment.
The rest, I'm John Chef Meyer, and my office is three hundred South Bend, I was called right, I, I beg your pardon, just in, just in, uh, say a few things with respect to the plan. First of all, uh, the, the concept of a plan, the gestation goes back quite a ways, as I explained with the committee this afternoon, and was arrived at through, uh, extraordinary participation, not only among the stakeholders, uh, in the city on, on the east bank, but also of the neighborhood residents, uh, and this was, uh, this was a plan that was developed out of a total of four plans that came out of, uh, a number of charlets that were held by a, a, a group, uh, that was chaired by a company out of Chicago, JJR, and supplemented by local area architects, economists, and folks that were experienced in development. Uh, I, as the president of, uh, East Bank Village Partnership, have been privileged to sort of shepherd this process through. We want to see a more, uh, development in the Howard Park area on, on the areas that are soon to be vacated, uh, the former stock construction property, uh, which has to be remediated, uh, as a result of some, uh, contamination, uh, and, uh, the former lot of transport garage. We think this is an extraordinary opportunity for residential construction that will draw in, uh, new transport residents along the river, and, uh, continue the momentum of this building, uh, uh, with all the gains of redevelopment, uh, from that side of the city down, is it down Buddy Street, and through the neighborhood, the triangle, and allow the, uh, centers of high school and remediation associated with the centers of grade school. There's a great moment, and we would hate to see this be ours, and I, and I urge you to adopt this plan, thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone else want to speak in favor?
I'm Tim Lamar, I'm six, twenty-two, K S Street, South Bend. Uh, much as Mr. Chef Meyer said this afternoon, I also mistakenly assumed previously or admired this plan, mistakenly considered, already officially adopted by the city, um, in fact, somewhere in my life, I've purchased a protein area, and probably got it in Howard Park, too, that I've been here today, excuse me, casual, thorough consideration, I was a bit, um, dismayed and frustrated by council, so the town council discussion of this, uh, bill at the, uh, September tenth meeting, because I felt, um, there were tangential questions becoming the focus, um, I'm pleased to see that the discussion has been much more cogent, and I think Dr. Varner, uh, already expressed, um, a, a hope for this plan, and that not committing the city to any dollars of this side, that any request for infrastructure money would come back according to this body, it would be the local commission, so I'd ask you all, keep that in mind for this report, my recommendation.
Anyone else want to speak in favor? Anyone in opposition?
Again, Jackie Davis, field office ten two five, South Bend. Uh, again, I just have a couple of questions, when this transport thing first started, um, and the building, I believe there's something in the news, that the building was being purchased, uh, you know, off the city bonds for a million dollars or whatever, did, did the city initially put any money into this site as far as purchasing or helping to down the building, anything of that nature? Um, it had, it's in city dollars already invested here, um, obviously, any kind of development is good, but, uh, from what I've seen in the past, if, if everything just goes through the redevelopment department, and does not come before the city council, a lot of times it seems to be just ushered through at any extent, so I, I think we need to make sure that a lot of things are brought before the council, instead of just shot through the redevelopment commission.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in opposition? You don't present, you might think you're a vote?
I'd like to clarify that the city does not own this site, it's owned by Transport, uh, Public Transportation Corporation, and, uh, the, uh, the process that we're working on to, uh, see development on that site is, uh, what you're trying to pull, working with the neighborhood, uh, with council to develop a RFP, which will be issued to developers, uh, local, regional developers, and have done further proposals for, uh, developing the site as residential, so, uh, the city has not purchased this site. I know this was something that was being considered by the unit administration, but no action was taken in that regard.
All right, thank you, sir. Before we turn it over to the council, I would like to thank this council, and as do the members of this council that used to be in the air council, uh, I don't think any council member has ever been in opposition to this plan, I think, uh, in regards to Mr. Chairman's question, I think this council's done a admirable job of asking questions and getting to some of the answers that, uh, Dr. Varner, Mr. Davis, and them too, are city responsibility, financial responsibility, 'cause this almost right through the council last year on a plan that was basically, we shambles, to be honest, looking more time I got presenting. So I'd like to thank the, uh, the chairman and everybody in the department, and the city administration for, for, for this, and, and the work with Mr. Chef Meyer, Mr. Sasso, and everything that you guys have done over the years has been very good, so I appreciate all the good work that you guys have done over there. So. What was that, Dick?
I'd like to move, um, well, I can move.
Right, we're done there, right? Uh.
That's option.
Yeah, I like that, yeah, I like that, meal, members. So, which is, thank you, twelve fifty-six. Thank you, thank you. There's more than a second for that, Mr. Boardman. Mr. Henry Davis?
Aye.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Aye.
Dr. Furick?
Aye.
Dr. Varner?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Mr. Furick?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
President Dieter?
Aye.
adopted nine zero. Thank you, four seventy-one. A resolution of the common council of the City of South Bend designating certain areas within the City of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as thirty-three hundred North Ten More, an economic relocation area for purposes of a three-year real property tax abatement for Indiana Royal Molding Inc. Thank you very much. We did have a seat and D committee meeting today, and we discussed the frozen kind of relief.
Uh, the Community and Economic Development Committee met today, and we sent Bill twelve seventy-one forward with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Go ahead, the presenter.
Jeff Walter, uh, two one five two seven, five zero ten, Elkhart, Indiana. I'm president of Indiana Royal Molding, we operate, uh, three classic processing factories in the area, two in Elkhart County, one here in Saint Joe County, uh, cheaper plan over here is the thirty-three hundred, go up ten more, um, as I mentioned, we're custom plastic processor, made of variety of large and hollow plastics, parts simply may know of, uh, plastic trash barrels, see on the highway, everyone's crossing, they, uh, we have, uh, recently been awarded a large new contract with new customers, we'd like to put that product in our South Bend factory, and the floors due to that need to add about twenty-five thousand square feet at a cost of, uh, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, we have to make that the project will create, uh, twenty full-time positions, uh, roughly nine hundred thousand dollars payroll. Um, we're seeking a three-year tax abatement, the total taxes, uh, to be abated during the three-year period are approximately seven thousand nine hundred ninety-five dollars, while during that three-year period, we will pay, uh, about two hundred and eighteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, we did receive a, uh, four-year tax abatement in two thousand and seven.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions? Yes, ma'am.
Um, I have a, well, first I'd like to say thank you, these are great jobs, um, good paying job, so, uh, that's a wonderful business opportunity, um, and then my question is directly about your products, um, there are a lot of vendors here locally that ship, uh, nationally and internationally, um, with your product, do you supply, um, highways across the country with, with the, um, trash barrels?
We're a custom processor, so those barrels are our, our product, but the person that we supply has them shipped all over the country.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. So, thank you again for your presentation to, uh, this, and, and personally. Thank you very much, sir. Does anyone like to speak in favor of this? Or opposition? What do you got, sir? As long as you want. Mr. Boardman? Mrs. Schaefer?
Aye.
Dr. Furick?
Aye.
Dr. Varner?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Mr. Furick?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis?
Aye.
President Dieter?
Aye.
Nine, ah, thank you, twelve, four seventy-one.
Uh, the Community and Economic Development.
A resolution of the common council of the City of South Bend, concerning the grant of certain real, real property tax abatement deduction, and waiving non-compliance for property commonly known as seventy-two fifty Bourbon Parkway, for our Howard Cleveland Partners LLC. Thank you. We had, we have a committee report today on this.
Yes, we do. Uh, the Community and Economic Development Committee met today, and we sent Bill twelve seventy-two forward to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you very much. Mr. Deo?
Good afternoon or evening, President Dieter, members of the full council, my name is Rich Deo, uh, as far as I'm concerned, I'm the boss, is at one hundred North Michigan Street, here in South Bend. I'm pleased to join Ryan Land, the principal of Howard Cleveland Partners, to request your approval of this resolution tonight. As explained, uh, briefly this afternoon, this resolution is to request, uh, a waiver of a, of a late filing of a form to, uh, convert the handful of tax abatement grants many years ago into the, the tax abatement. The project behind this request, uh, relates to a, an abatement that was granted in two thousand and ten, while Cleveland Partners can build an eighty thousand square foot facility to facilitate the relocation of Invercare Corporation from an existing facility in South Bend to a new facility, as well as to open up the former facility to, uh, to create space for Patterson Logistics to locate its town. Uh, Howard Cleveland Partners exceeded its investment, uh, estimates by over six hundred thousand dollars, this did, uh, result in the relocation of Invercare, its expansion of employment, and increase in, in, uh, wages here, as well as opened up the former, uh, facility where Invercare was located to, uh, facilitate Patterson Logistics relocation to town as well. Uh, we appreciate your consideration, and we'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
All right, good luck.
You have a question? Yes, I do have a question, uh, I think it's probably more directed toward the administration rather than, um, you, you, Mr. Deo, uh, this came to me about three weeks ago, obviously, we had a conversation about it, and I told you guys that I had no problem with supporting something like this, however, uh, we talked about special, special failure in terms of counseling, and, um, how do we, absolutely, see change by case, or is there a clear understanding consistency, uh, and how do we make matters out? So, uh, I guess my question is that, uh, because you guys are off, sometimes we're filing this, and this is my, my, we have my court, but what happened when the next person does this, now, I guess, again, for administration, uh, Mayor Booney does, is there a timing to run through any things, so that this, this doesn't happen again, uh, or are we going to just move case by case scenario, uh, how, how are we gonna work it through?
Certainly, we want to, uh, be a flexible administration whenever there's, uh, economic development opportunities, and it's especially compelling. Uh, I don't know that you can create a policy on exceptions to the policy, because the nature of exceptions, they're not in the policy, but, uh, I do think it would be appropriate for us to perhaps have a conversation, and input from the committee would be welcome to this, on, uh, just how flexible we ought to be, and what kind of opportunities are deserving of special consideration. I'll be sure to have a conversation with our, uh, community and economic ownership, uh, to, uh, to request on that more deeply than I, I have at this moment, so thank you for, uh, paying our attention today.
Because, uh, I mean, what, he's got a couple of years off, right, following this exception, a half a year, one year?
No, no, ten days or something.
Yeah, it's time to let, you know?
Well, I know.
Whatever. And you think that, 'cause I had a hand with that, like, saying, he came to, uh, to the front of stairs, and what happened is he asked, uh, if his question, or his question came up, or it wasn't enough, or it was too late, I don't think I have a question to do. And is there a deadline or not, if I'm, if that, if, if not, you have no one to go for, but I just wanna make sure that we're clear, just on how we do things.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, thank you. Anyone like to speak in favor? Four seventy-two. Opposition?
Mr. Hordy? Dr. Furley?
Aye.
Dr. Burke?
Aye.
Vice President Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
Mr. Furley?
Aye.
Mr. Scott?
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis?
Aye.
Mrs. Shitt?
Aye.
President D?
Aye.
Nine oh. Thank you. Proceeding to first reading of fifty-two twelve.
First reading on the bill, the county council of the city of South Bend, Indiana authorizing the acquisition, construction, and installation of certain additions, extensions, and improvements to the city sewer work. You're to extend of additional revenue bonds to provide funds for the payment of the cost thereof, the collection, segregation, and distribution of the revenue of excess sewer work, the establishment of fund number six fifty-one, the twenty-four sewer work construction fund, and other related matters.
Fifty-two twelve, the county utility committee, we set the second, third reading of public hearing on ten eight.
Second. Motion in the second, I'll say the rest.
Aye.
In the opposition. Thank you. Fifty-three twelve.
First reading on the bill, the county council of the city of South Bend, Indiana concerning the charge revenue, uh, refunding of outstanding waterworks revenue bonds of two thousand and two, issued to finance construction and improvements to the municipal waterworks of the city of South Bend, Indiana, authorizing the issuance of revenue bonds for express purpose in the principal amount, not to exceed four million two hundred thousand dollars, addressing other matters connected there, available, including the issuance of notes in anticipation of funds, and repealing ordinance inconsistent here with.
Fifty-four twelve, the county utility committee, we set the second, third reading of public hearing on ten eight.
Second. In the opposition, thank you very much.
Fifty-four twelve. First reading on the bill, fixing max, maximum salaries and wages of appointed officers and non-bargaining employees of the city of South Bend, Indiana for the calendar year.
Fifty-four twelve, the county office committee, we set the second, third reading of public hearing on ten eight.
Second. Motion in the second, I'll say the rest.
Aye.
In the opposition for that. Thank you, fifty-five twelve.
First reading on the bill, the county council of the city of South Bend, Indiana setting manual salary for the mayor for the calendar year.
Fifty-five twelve, the county office committee, we set the second, third reading of public hearing on ten eight.
Second. Motion. I'll say the rest.
Uh...
Thank you very much. Unfinished business? There's a motion for bill twelve sixty-nine.
Fifty-four twenty-nine, the county office committee, we set the second, third reading of public hearing on ten eight.
Second. Uh, in the opposition, thank you. And a motion for twelve seventy.
Twenty-seven, we set for, uh, second, third reading before ten twenty-two.
Okay.
Motion second, I'll say the rest.
Aye.
In the opposition, thank you. There, uh, motion for thirty-seven twelve.
I make a motion, we accept this bill first, uh, as a substitute.
I got a motion second, I accept that as a substitute, I'll say the rest.
Aye.
In the opposition, now may I have a motion for the substitute, thirty-seven twelve. About to make a recommendation, Dr. Ryan, maybe.
The county office committee, we set the second, third reading of public hearing on ten eight.
Second. I'll say the rest.
Aye.
In the opposition, now may I have a recommendation for thirty-seven twelve.
Thirty-eight twelve, the county office committee, we set the second, third reading of public hearing on ten twenty-two.
Second.
All right. I'll say the rest.
Aye.
In the opposition, thank you. Proceeding to bill thirty-five twelve.
The light is up, Mr. Mayor, twenty-two today, and we're good on deal.
We got some kind of, yeah, okay.
Fifty-two. Fifty-five twelve, the county office committee, we set the second, third reading of public hearing on ten eight.
Do we need to set up for the eighth, or do we have to set up a different day?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Second.
This, uh, let me.
All right, I'll say the rest.
Aye.
In the opposition, thank you.
Just, uh, both bills, uh, fifty-four, fifty-five, that were read by title, are from two thousand and two, and they're by concern, uh, say, entitled to, otherwise to, uh, the, the, there was just a distributed area, and I just put them on the, yeah.
Okay. What, what question? You got any, if, you know, the one we just did on eight, you know, if there's some further things that work out, then you would notify it.
The line standing, uh, in fact, on three, it's turned on twenty, uh, achievable in lines of, you know, the, 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 the.
Okay, so based on what you said, you're moving to the front of the line.
And then, uh, also, unfinished business. We had, uh, a couple, couple to the floor complaints, or I guess inquiries, and so, uh, one was directed to the board and vice committee regarding, uh, an issue with, uh, some more, what they had.
I think that, I was not at that, uh, particular council meeting, but I did receive, uh, inquiry, uh, from one of our citizens, I think it was Mr. Davis, regarding, uh, um, an employee, uh, that works the West Bay and for, uh, Mr. Mike Tavoria. A letter was submitted to his office, uh, outlining your concerns, and asked us to date, who's not, I want to check for the city control to see if we received a response. That letter was, uh, sent upon last Friday, Thursday.
Uh, Wednesday.
Wednesday. And so, I would ask, uh, city, um, uh, council attorney to, uh, contact, um, Mr. Tavoria, to ask us just to see when we can, uh, accept the response to your inquiry. Mr. Davis, could we just follow up with that?
We also had a privilege of the floor by Stephanie Jones, had a question, personal based investigation for her son, and also the Anderson family, uh, that was sent to Dr. Furley's committee. Dr. Furley, uh, busy working with our council attorney, she will give an update on more of those, uh, and thanks for watching.
Uh, yes, I also see, uh, kind of, uh, we've had access to, you know, kind of, across the office, uh, and we are waiting on, from him, uh, regarding to the fact of finding the person on, uh, uh, he was in the center of the council, especially, uh, really, here at some, some stage, like, uh, accident, uh, because he didn't, uh, make the determination of whether there's any corporate accident, anything that could go forward, you know, so, awaiting that, so, so, follow up again, uh, in the next, uh, progress, uh, of, of , uh, on this, uh, right now, so, uh, so.
Thank you, Dr. Furley, thank you, Mr. Furley. Any new business before the council?
Oh, okay, yeah, I'm in.
Councilmember Scott?
I'm in.
Just a second, is it all ready?
I don't know.
Um, I would just like to say, uh, part of residential neighborhood committee, uh, I've been working with, um, the Hala Park Neighborhood Association. They are starting back up their neighborhood association, um, try to get organized and help, uh, the people down in the hollow area. So, um, I look forward to working with Mayor and, um, Police Department and few others to get that organized. I have to, uh, kind of leading that charge as well. Uh, I think it's a good thing they, um, need some attention in that area. We have a lot of, they have housing, they have sidewalks, crime issues, and there's people that are really careful. So, uh, we'll be going to media and let everybody know. I think October will be an organizational meeting, kind of open to the public, open to all the residents in that area. So, more to come. You working with Josiah Martino?
Uh, not yet.
Any other new business?
Yes, sir. Uh, we'll took a report from the, uh, the development. I had, uh, had concerns about, uh, my electricity that we're coming out of or going into, uh, Grand South District. I was touring the shit down with Kevin Smith, this is my official from, uh, AP last week, and I'm kind of meeting that some of the energy that was going in there would not be that huge. However, uh, working with Mr. Kevin, uh, Jonathan Burke as well as the officials from AP, they're wanting to look into what's going on at the housing authority as it relates to the magnetic field, electromagnetic field that we're discussing, why some of the prices are affected, when the train goes through, uh, why some of the issues that they're, uh, having are on point, because of trains and also fuel, uh, electric going through. So, uh, we're gonna have to answer probably for another, uh, few weeks, but we're looking to correct it, just seeing if there may be a background, uh, dealing with their transformation, uh, they're, they're passing new issues that I was, uh, bringing up. So, um, that was a positive meeting that happened last week. I'm gonna move forward, uh, patient comments, black parties, are we getting any information on whether they are actually filling out from the black party forms and getting it approved and actually paying for black parties?
How's that for me, uh, there are, uh?
That, that'd be great. Um, also, we had these big, these big, uh, updates last week after the last Thursday. Uh, what came out of the meeting is that the business owners are still looking forward to having some sort of, uh, plans on, but as a matter of fact, they came in with a vision of looking to deal with a lot, representing to a park lot. Uh, there are notes, obviously, from the meeting, the boardroom attended, and so I'm going to ask that maybe, uh, councilmen, uh, look at those notes and, uh, pay attention to them, doesn't make sense, wouldn't be asked administration not to move on, I haven't talked about there, but, uh, to consider the, uh, attention that the business owners are, uh, uh, looking at, the options, and, uh, hopefully we'll get a support from their actions as well as the public, uh, partnership, like we're doing with the Hala Park, uh, initiative. Um, remember, the last one, uh, there was a desire in newspaper, uh, two boys, members of Snidecky, Bill Snidecky raised, um, had some remarks, uh, as he and Robert Taylor had an dispute about something, uh, not necessarily the street that I'm starting about, it was the school closing that came up that, uh, made me, uh, think. Uh, we're looking at the neighborhood and looking towards, um, new economic future for South Bend, closing schools is a big one, stretching areas that have been depreciated, but there's needle schools, uh, also clearly looks like a probably should still stand there because of the area being picked back up. So, as it affects the way that the city operates, we can advocate and develop, you know, take down schools, uh, should be a no-no, rather than a good deal. And I would just like to ask the party engage, maybe the school preparation, or their plans of shutting down schools, how that will affect us negatively or positively as a city when we're looking to, uh, obviously, do our, uh, making the ban on harm issues, as well as economically, uh, bringing back a stronger tax base, something about set values in cities earlier, and, um, taking away schools to the neck of our set value area. So, uh, I don't know, who's the committee that we can run that through, maybe, come on? Bring it on, definitely. But I know there's a, uh, obviously, uh, relationship status to, uh, community relations. So, I don't know, uh, Valer would want to, uh, carry that mantle with that particular conversation or not, but I think it's another conversation to see if it's up there.
So, you would like to put that in?
Yes, I would, but I don't know the chairman person would. She doesn't, I would, I would already do my committee.
We will take care of that, and that will be.
That's, uh, I would like to.
Henry Don.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm just under new business, and this has to do with, uh, housekeeping or, uh, I am, um, joining Tim Scott in trying to go paperless. Um, I am not quite as tech heavy as Tim with his iPad, so I do apologize for the weeks to come. Um, I am a PC person, I'm not an tablet person, so if you see me here, um, with my laptop, it is because I am trying to join, uh, Tim's efforts to go paperless. So, I saved two hundred and thirty-two pages this week, just paperless. So, I apologize, but, uh, that's probably what you can ask.
All right, anybody else that has a new business?
Oliver. Oliver. Um, I'd like for our council to be to keep the eyes and ears open, um, in the district regarding places where they think they would need to have bus shelters. Um, as you heard in the transport report, uh, we are getting federal funds to, um, locate bus shelters throughout the city. And, um, but now I'm working finally getting the whole thing with the, um, Walmart area, with Walmart leadership. So, um, it's on the south side, who's coming there during the rain and snow and bad weather, you see somebody, you hire citizens standing up there waiting on a, a bus and, uh, with no shelters. And, um, we want to, if you can spot those areas in the wrong district, um, around the stores and around key places, you want to do it in one place and on the back line. Um, so, you'll be hearing more about that. I want to thank the mayor for coming out to the one village. Um, Park Neighborhood, um, other Saturday, I got there at the end, you were there at the beginning, so that was good. Uh, also, regarding transportation, um, our economic, um, development departments and our committee, I would like for us to, um, for new businesses coming to town, um, it would like for you to also direct them into some kind of collaboration with transport. We are having some challenges on, and some issues, um, especially for places in, um, our need of ridership for their, uh, um, operations, for members to come out and to come there and leave, but to set up the, uh, new business on an area where there is no bus route, or it's too difficult. To go back to the question that was raised earlier, are we gonna have to change routes? Because when you set up a new business that is not on a route, it throws off all the other routes and all the other time and everything else. And so, as our economic development team comes in, some cities have put together a transportation team, um, to work along with the new businesses, so we'll be aware of that. Because right now, we have a situation going on with one of the businesses in town that has a lot of people coming in and out of there, but they're not on a bus route. And they want us to relocate, but the way we have done our route, it is no way to really do that, um, that's gonna make anybody happy. We set up something with them, it's gonna throw off the other riders, we, we doubt you something, they're gonna be mad at us until we can come off. But my first question was, when they made these plans, did anybody think about doing a bus route? Because majority of their customers use the bus, and nobody, that somebody said, uh, somebody made a phone, phone call, but nobody did. So, that's where we are. Last thing, again, uh, like I mentioned today, running to work along with the administration, with A.J. Wright, and the news that you hear going along with that, we are very pleased to work along with you as the district person out there, so we can join with you to making sure that that can hopefully soon one day be up and running again. I'm done.
Okay. Any other, uh, new business? Seeing that I don't like some new business, I'd like to again to thank the administration. You know, some of my questions may seem, uh, confrontational sometimes, I have very high expectations of all the new people we have in the administration, all the youth that you're bringing, all the new ideas. So, again, I appreciate all the hard work. I really like, cause the controller got a part of this information, uh, charged and saw. So, again, I appreciate all of her hard work you guys have put in so far on that. Okay, now we're going to move to the floor. You may speak on anything unless it has been on the agenda. And I think what you may be talking about has been on the agenda, so.
I didn't hear what you did with thirty-five, yes.
That's the session, the ZNA committee, for the, uh, for the, and could you, um, clarify, uh, what happened if you get a letter from my attorney?
As, uh, the mayor, uh, noted, this, there was a professional, um, tried to, uh, negotiate on, we're going to, uh, drive off the rest of the city. Turning this morning, uh, two or three, our officer by letter that they, uh, they, uh, 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 uh.
For anyone else who wants to come up here, if you want something specifically for this help to look into, uh, Dr. Furley, if you have time, I'd like this. There are forums that Mr. Hordy would have, or over there, you can fill those out, if you'd love, or specifically to look into something, if you just want to come up and talk for three minutes, you may do so by giving your name and address. Mr. Scott?
Uh-huh.
He can try.
I'm pleased.
Okay.
I mean, it's, I'm gonna be a one way, but, uh, I mean, I, obviously, I, you know, I think it was a thousand words. So, again, I'd like to sell it out of my closet, and I think we've got some city officials, uh, that kind of need to raise some sellings out of their closets soon, so the city can, uh, get that advantage and what have you.
Name and address, please.
Jessica Davis. She'll lot ten two oh five, South Bend, Indiana. We don't know that. Um, I got one of my questions to the mayor was, uh, the, uh, position of the director of public works. I know we had heard a while ago, but they were searching for a new director. Gary Jalac had retired. Uh, I had brought the issue up that, and there was a contract that I'd heard was signed, um, as for him being a consultant. So, I was kind of curious on, yeah.
was kind of curious on, have we found a new director of Public Works yet? Uh, also, I was wondering, uh, you know, we used to play a game called Werther's War though, uh, I haven't heard much from Loserman, so I'm kind of wondering Werther's Loserman, uh, I heard some rumors that he might even be out of the country, uh, basically, you know, with what we've got going on in the city and the police department, I would think top priority should be finding a new, uh, chief of police, and they're saying that they're gonna, you know, start taking applications, well, this is six months after the fact, and we're just now getting they're taking applications, that seems like a pretty big lifetime, uh, I was kind of curious, I read in the newspaper that Chief Hurley was gonna put on another hat, go back to work for the, uh, coroner's, uh, department, and I was just kind of curious if there's any kind of a conflict of interest there, be concerned with how it's going on with, uh, you know, implications against him, Corvus, uh, he'll be working hand in hand with, hand in hand with him, uh, you know, there's also issues at the police department that don't seem to be moving very quickly, so, how is this guy gonna manage to handle another four time job within that capacity? Um, uh, I also had some questions, hopefully the council's looking into White Officer Jack Stilke, because apparently getting ten days off without pay, women for, uh, coming out and, uh, basically saying, hey, look, I was threatened, um, you guys passed a little war, and I, I know at the point of having that, it didn't come a police or fire possibly because of union issues, I hope you're looking into things to fire that little pair off, um, but many people think that's very unfair, and, uh, if he does get a public hearing, I'm sure I'll be there, and several other citizens to support him on that, and, uh, I was kind of curious on why the mayor took the issue across the street to the federal courts after you, the council subpoenaed him to a local court, since the federal body had the tapes, at least twice they were aware of, and sent him right back to the city again, and it just seems like a sidestep and a small tactic on the mayor's part, uh, to send it there, should be handled on a state level or local issue.
Hello, I'm two twenty-two, Navarro Street, South Bend, um, and still, these one of you guys are fired, and I hope you, uh, fire it and you're in on this, but the thing I want to talk about, I'm on the, talk like this, if I don't, you still, I've been very worried that Citizens United for the Black Government is gonna rally behind him, I think that's a weakness to give him ten days off, uh, for speaking out about what happened to him, and we're gonna rally behind him, so I hope that you would look through a little fire, this whole thing, it is a good, uh, uh, I don't know what we're trying to accomplish here, if he's willing, an officer with ten days of you and this law nigga, and putting fear on the local officers, I think that's upset, and you might want to give away, but we have to assume counsel the right way, because you're gonna stand behind the officer, you're gonna protect us every day on the streets, and we're gonna stand by him, because that's the difference, you're gonna conspiracy about it like that, I mean, if he's a stranger, you have the right to talk about it, so, I hope you would stand with Citizens United for the Black Government, we're gonna stand out of the street, all the way to the end, and we will be fine, during any show, till we're standing ourselves up, and I hope you join me in that.
Christine Davis, five two nine, Fort Hills Community Drive, South Bend, I'm here to read the article dated May seventeen, two thousand and eleven, by Jeff Parrot, South Bend, City Staff Writer, with the title, Walmart Seeks To Sell Down Its South Bend Store, Council Members Want To Learn More About Assault Rifle Ammo, for South Bend Council, Town Council Is Taking A Hard Look At Whether To Add Or Remove Walmart In Here And Done Done, Council President Eric Doc Dink, I'm here. The city police officer said he wants more information on a store's proposed sale of assault weapons ammunition, in particular, the store has proposed selling two twenty-three caliber, three rounds, which is used in high powered rifles, such as the A R fifteen diamond sword, he said he has asked for tactical autonomy, as he forewent to, with the weather the city can restrict the sale of certain types of ammunition, Walmart needs a special exception to the city zoning code for its selling of, the store seeks to sell only rifle and shotgun for handguns and target shootings, and says they will not sell the handgun or tactical gun.
First round, twelve thirty-one, ninety, first I want to say thank you to the city council board for sending the letter to the work in the Michael Anderson case, I applaud you for adding your time and for hearing me and the family. As you heard, Ms. Christine reading, I had a debate with attorney from Walmart, who said that they were gonna just sell assault ammunition, but they wouldn't sell the guns, anybody would take, the Sunday newspaper should have got one of these, council board member, do you have this paper here?
Yes, it is.
Inside this paper here, are assault guns, right here in our community, assault guns, our squad team carries this, you see this on television, you see it in Iraq, I talked to the mayor, he's very concerned about it, but what's our next move? Our next move is, we need to get some orders from Walmart, I went to Walmart the other night, and I stood in Walmart on Island Road for an hour and a half, president, it's white, I took a picture of the gun cap, the employee left a lock off the gun cap, assault rifle, a thousand dollar gun unprotected, how much further do we have to go, and the raw jack, young man, went to school with a gun, it's real close to South Bend, I'm concerned about the streets in South Bend in my community, why does Walmart have to sell guns, they have a sign that said they won't sell them on Christmas, but they're selling eight to ten, you can't get a, an alcohol beverage after three o'clock, which you can go in and buy ten boxes of ammunition, if I don't show you them in question, I talked to intern chief early, and, uh, I talked to Mr. Rakovsky, Scott, uh, when I talked to them at Walmart, he detected it seemed the same thing, right now, today, Walmart is still doing the same thing, how many young men and women have to lower their strength before we take an action? What's the answer? What's the answer, council board member? As I stand before me, if I can't break them up, I'm gonna shut them up.
And thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak to the council this time?
Lawrence Frank, seven three one, you do best, I won't get into it, but, uh, for this, I may be dealing with the mayor later, but we can handle that downstate, mainly up here, I live on state, uh, the place over there by the, uh, watching, the, uh, the smell, uh, doesn't, uh, uh...
Can you start with your roots? I'm working with Mike, we can, uh, come here.
Okay, thank you. Uh, just like to come off and congratulate you, Mr. Davis, certainly dealing with the youth violence in the city, you know, being handled by the, uh, by the, uh, that, that they came up with, uh, well, we certainly need to handle by the police force as well as our partnerships with the local crime watches as well, but congratulations, certainly enough, uh, to this, uh, administration.
And anyone else want to speak to the council this time?
Joe Anderson, uh, thank you, I'm, uh, I just want some clarification, and I appreciate the council for what they said they were attempting to do or starting to do, and I guess I addressed it to Furley, uh, he said you, y'all sent a letter to the prosecutor's office, so y'all can see what they said, y'all have to determine where to go from there, or anything they're gonna get back from them is the, um, is what they came up with, and what they came up with and what we came up with is, is like nineteen eighty, they had three major, major discrepancies, first, there was no strong, there was no cheer, it was marijuana, and in three weeks, three weeks, marijuana, the magazine pumped in, the cocaine, this strong, all of a sudden, they admitted, because they found out that we had it, uh, the cheer, that wasn't new, they admitted that they did sit them up in the cheer, and then had, and only anybody brought that up, because they found out that we had the strong, and had a DNA tested, and it wasn't DNA on it, then they come out and say, oh, yeah, well, yeah, 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 we, we did use a strong, the only thing I'm saying is that, um, that's the report you're gonna get from them, I think to be, uh, totally biased, that you need to report that, um, the investigators, all the county investigators, and hiring investigators were AFAM, and it's totally, totally different from the air span, uh, we just need to get to the root of this, okay?
Thank you, sir.
And y'all have two seventy-four, and Shawak, and then you have four six five, four six, I want to thank you guys, um, Dr. Furley, if you would contact me, that would be great, I'd be more than happy to sit down with you and go over what we have, because I know things that the city attorney's office and the prosecutor's office and the police department actually understand that I've been doing reports, that are completely contradictory to what they say, um, so I invite you to sit down with me and see, um, our side of it, and you will see if the information that Harry Potter provided, um, is either fictitious, um, by way of information that's been provided to him, or he's just missing form, um, either which way the information is, I'm not saying what information has been provided to me, we are not involved in everything that we have, um, for strategic purposes, obviously, um, but there is information, um, that will lead you to understand, um, the importance of saying we showed up every two weeks, um, and they're gonna continue to show up, so please just take the, now, I have something else I want to say in regards to, um, our estate, I don't know when the mayor is going to highly stand up and start helping for the people, I mean, he was elected, virtually, I didn't, um, I wasn't, he's not still that, um, but he was elected, and he was supposed to work for the people, not the prosecutor's office, not the, for the people, so when he takes care of the page and Darryl Boyton got a position, instead of doing the right thing, and putting them back to their position, because we know damn well they're going to go, um, and then you allow the protecting of the people on the page, what he's feeling to realize is, is that all the people that's ever called that line are now going to have a claim against the city, anybody that called will have a claim against the city, because your five people will have a claim against the city, so when is he going to stand up and start to, uh, for the city, instead of his friends that's behind us? That's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else like to talk to the council this time?